I'd give it a minute.
Could you drop that down? One in the other room?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. A lot of people make it. Thank you for accommodating the suggestion. I think that works. But there's been no small matter. Never see them again.
The ready change ring one.
I am speaking to.
Yeah. Jackie, you ready? Recording?
Oh, yes.
Great. Moving out of executive session back into regular session on March sixteenth at six fifty-four. First order of business is going to be to wrap up the discussion inside with a motion, right, or a motion on nine point four.
I move to approve and ratify the new twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six collective bargaining agreements for the police and general bargaining units.
Hey, motion was made by Council Kenyon, seconded by Council Tarman. Any discussion? What else? All right, great. Can you call for a vote?
Councilor Hooker?
Aye.
Councilor Charman?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Councilor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councilor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Councilor Hollitt?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Jim.
Right, Sam.
Appreciate it. Yeah, we'll pardon you soon.
Right, Toronto, the was not one free use of updating surplus property lists. Okay, so I want to introduce this for someone else.
Right, so as you know, now that we have a realtor of record, sell city properties, we need to identify which city properties we want to put up for sale. We did this once, four years ago in two thousand and twenty, we did that list to council. Rick and I went through all the city properties that we own and identified the ones that we think are surplus and could be put up for sale. Obviously, some properties are more valuable than others, and some of them we may want to hang on to a little more. Everyone's got a price, right? So, you know, if someone wants to offer us four billion dollars before.
The Cattary.
True, the Cattary. Sorry, Trudy. Um, maybe four point five, four point five. Two, but.
Also long term.
Appreciate it. Um, so you have a list that we put together that we think is pretty solid. Um, but council is certainly, it's your choice in the end what to decide to surplus. And again, putting on a surplus list does not mean it's going to be sold. It will process, it just means it's something for sale. Uh, there's also, there was a link that we provided to council, we couldn't get it to work on our computer here. We do have Google Earth in case we need to zoom in to see a property. But the link hopefully works on you. On you, okay, all right. Uh, we also have some of the smaller pictures to help identify. And I included the materials just sitting on the desk, it will all picture. Yeah, so that's, that's. This list is solid. If that's the case, then I can draft a resolution to have those properties surplus. I suppose one could just be.
Your motion.
I move with direct city staff to draft a resolution for the surplus, the city properties identified by council during this meeting.
Second.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Council Hooker and seconded by Council Kenyon, discussion.
Yes, I wondered if we were to decide to avoid one of these at this time or or more, would they be able to be added at a future date?
Sure, yeah, this would require another motion, like it was another resolution.
Okay, and once they're declared as surplus, are they just surplus forever or until there's a motion to say we want to take it off surplus?
I don't know the answer to that question.
If you want to take it off surplus?
Well, I was curious because I know that we created a list a few years ago. And some of the, at least some of these are included on that list, so I don't know if we need to take that into consideration or if this would supersede that. That's what I wanted to know also.
Yeah, we definitely expect.
One quick question. These are all advertised by Realtor of record, right? I mean, they're put out there so they don't just sit there.
Right, that's why we hired the Realtor Record because we had the list before and maybe we're on our LMS and stuff, but they kind of drop off.
Right.
There's no activity and so, you know, and we have the speeding signs out there and OIP saying it for sale, but the sun is.
What?
So, yeah, that's, that's the whole idea. We did, my team's very good at saving the list. She starts putting that out there.
Um, if we choose to not put one of the properties on the surplus list, does that prevent us from selling the properties? It absolutely has to be surplus listed.
Yeah.
Um, is one of the properties we were in conversation with the business to do.
I have, I've talked to that gentleman a little bit. It sounds like he's kind of dropped it, but he's thinking about restructuring, trying to get funding, coming, coming back with another offer. So, um, he would be welcome to, to submit. Offers.
So, just throwing this example out there, if we've put that property up for surplus and another neighbor's community wanted to do something in her neighborhood, that person could we then take it off the surplus?
Yeah.
Tarman. Councilor Zarsen, any questions about surplus?
No questions.
So, the only thing I have, James, is, um, I see some of these are already sort of committed for a little while, like plot seven on the bill of power. So, obviously, you do have to be judicious about how to offer those up. Well, I'm not sure Chief Martin's ready to give up his.
Well, but again, I realize that it's a certain situation where if the price is right and he can build a new evidence shed somewhere if the lights actually work. And I'd be willing to go for that and we would certainly, we're not going to sell anything without counsel. We can't. Yeah.
Um, anything else? All right, Jackie?
I'm stuck in here. Before we do this, I think we should, the motion actually says as identified by the council tonight, so.
We don't do anything.
As it is, okay. Aye. Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Councilor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Councilor Hollitt?
Aye.
Councilor Hooker?
Aye.
Councilor Charman?
Right, motion passes. Point five, which is revising. February sixteenth, twenty-three minutes.
Think this will be the easiest agenda item of the year. We simply noticed after we already approved the February sixteenth minutes that we, when Mr. Kelly went in was applying for the two committees, or I thought he was applying for two, he was actually only applying for the one. And that was the ODA, which we put him on, and he dropped his application for RTM, DRT. We switched that, we got it wrong. Said that we put him on RTMB and he gets three. Oh, that was actually the draft, so we simply need a motion to approve the revised minutes from February sixteenth, which we.
Your motion. You approve the revised, but you're sixteen.
I'll second that.
Made by Council Tarman, seconded by Council Kenyon. Any other discussion? Jackie?
Councilor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councilor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Councilor Hollitt?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Councilor Hooker?
Aye.
Councilor Charman?
Aye.
Carrie's. Nine point six, Hill Street turnaround issue. James, do you think this last?
Yes, um, so, Phil's not able to be at the meeting site due to this serious, uh, family emergency. So, I'm picking this up and, and, um, so I wasn't as prepared as I would like to be, this is kind of last minute, but I'm well aware of the situation. Council is among the best here, so. We're in, uh, the Brewers and some of their neighbors on Hill Street would like turnaround. If it been one that's kind of created after construction project into our attention that that was within the hundred, hundred feet or hundred yards, feet, hundred feet of one of the wells, we couldn't use that. So, we shut that down. We're still trying to figure out how can we improve the turnaround areas. So, a couple ideas have emerged. One is moving the turnaround further down Hill Street. Also the Brewers property, but still on city property. And there are, are drinking water, um, pipes uh, would, would be run over, so they would need to be reinforced. Put with better materials, et cetera, otherwise catastrophic uh, conditions could occur if they broke. What's the likelihood of that? Pretty low. However, it does happen and it happened this past summer as you fall out to OIP. Pipe that no one thought would ever break, broke and millions of gallons poured out of the water and washed away um, our firefighters' tents. Never thought that would happen. It happened. So, we have concerns for this area. Um, I was in a meeting today with Oregon Health Authority, drinking water protection folks, some division of Oregon Health Authority. Um, they also expressed concerns for this and we talked it out and, um, they definitely wanted to make sure that we weren't putting any kind of right away streets within a hundred feet of the wells. We assured them, nope, that's, that's not an issue. We then talked about the proposed turnaround and where it's located. Expressed concerns that the materials that were used, some of them, some of the materials were back in the eighties. Not the best materials. So, some of, like, the mapping is not exactly known. We know pretty sure where we're at, but within a few feet, we don't know because those records burned in the fire from the books and the times. So, City's been working on this. Both sides have been trying to come to a, a solution. Um, which Phil's has drawn up plans to connectivity of the entire city by making the alleys trivable. Uh, that is City Staff's recommendation because we believe that where the pipe is now, I know this is debatable and you will hear from Brewers, where the pipe is now and Ed Hodges is, is online to answer questions, so is Robert Christman. It's in a really bad place. You've, you've got three major mines coming in. If it breaks, it affects everything, negative pressure can actually make the pipes explode. Again, low percentage this will happen, but if it does, we're talking millions, millions of dollars because if explodes that pipe that goes underneath Sam Creek, we're in trouble. But I was also informed today by OHA that if we leave things as is, meaning the well field is protected, we do not put the turnaround in there. Uh, we still need to document that we have protected that pipe. Send them pictures, send a letter. We have no problems with, with OHA. If we do decide to put a turnaround there, they want to closely monitor this project, meaning submit the plans ahead of time, have the plans checked afterwards. So, that's an additional cost that we hadn't anticipated to put the turnaround on city property. So, I honestly, I absolutely feel for the Brewers. I feel for a lot of our citizens. I think we have, we can count it up, fifty-one streets didn't have a turnaround. I, again, I, I understand the need for one. I've been through this. I've been down there with Fire Chief, Council Hollitt, you drove the truck yourself. Yes, it took a few few turns, but not a full twenty-seven point turn, three, three point turn or whatever. You can't turn it around. It's a bit of a hassle. But I, I just think it's way too dangerous for for what we're trying to, to put a turnaround on city property. I'd like to turn it over to Ed to explain the science a lot better than I can.
So, uh, City Engineers, I just. I formed a bed. Do you have some remarks?
Yeah, I just, I'll summarize. Can, can everyone hear me?
Yes, good.
Okay. No, I, I think James described the situation pretty well. At, at the end of the day, you've got a pipe that comes out of the well field from well number six, a ten inch pipe. It goes to a T. This T has three valves. From that T, you've got an old pipe that heads out into Hill Street. That was part of the original Pope and Talbot piping system that's out in there and off on the side of the road. Then, on the other side of the T, heading towards the river, is a pipe that was put in to meet our twenty seventeen project uh, when we put the bore under the river. And so essentially, in this one place, it's, it's almost as if it's the heart of your water system. All of the water, all of the, that's pumped to the different tanks, all the water that flows out of there comes through this junction in a sense. And there is some that goes off on the other end of the well field, a small amount, but the majority of it goes through that central T. I'm just here, you, you, I'm hired by the city to give you my opinion on engineering matters and my opinion is, is that in a situation like this, there just is no reason that vehicles should be allowed to drive near or on this piping system. The fact is what James, you know, how he put it is you have a probability of catastrophic failure. In a way, it doesn't really matter if it's that low because if it fails, the impact will be so enormous. And in that, you know, we had this incident that occurred last fall over near the city shop. And that was something we really wouldn't expect to happen. But it did and we, we believe that it may have happened because of the heavy loading of the vehicles bringing in fire equipment to the fire camp. But the bottom line, it's the main pipe where that one tank cracked. And fortunately for the city, if you were going to have an incident like this happen, it happened at pretty much the best place possible. It was close to the city shop. The, uh, the city crew could get on it quickly. You had only one tank, the flow from that one million gallon tank coming out of the pipe. And it had a place to go without any major structures in the way, except for a lot of tents of the fire crews. And if anyone's here who was on one of those fire crews and got their tent ruined, I'm not trying to belittle your experience out there. It, uh, cost the city probably, in talking with Public Works, over fifty thousand dollars to repair. Uh, did major damage to the road that was there, uh, to some of the other utility systems in-house. And, and this would only be, so this is sort of a, a dry run, no pun intended, of what would happen if something happened at this point down near Hill Street at this valve cluster. Because in that case, you have three tanks. And they would all let go if something, if an event like this happened, a pipe broke or a valve was broken off. And you would have instead of maybe five thousand gallons a minute coming out of the tank, you could, you would have a pipe, you'd have significantly more. And it would take longer to get out because you have to move the equipment over from the city shop. And this is a situation where minutes are hours. It would just tear that whole area apart and it's, it's really hard to talk about the extent of the damage. It would, it would be truly catastrophic. I can't really quantify how much damage would occur. It would be vastly significant. And so, again, I just go back, my advice to you, and I just don't have a personal dog in this hunt. I'm looking at, it says you're engineer, is that this is an area that should be, you know, vehicle access should not be allowed to come onto this, the piping system and the valves and application.
Thanks.
Just gonna have a, just a couple of minor things. And we're talking about the probability of, of, of actually breaking. And that's right, it doesn't really matter. You don't want to, you don't want to play Russian roulette unless you play national roulette, so. You know, I don't see why council would want to go there. Um, and if, I'm sure the Brewers point out that it, it has been driven over for years. That's true. It has, and nothing's broken. That's true. Same is true at the OIP. That had been driven over for years. No one thought it was going to break. Bro, I just, I'm usually not a risk adverse person. I mean, I steal the clips and freak myself all the time. I just worried if the risk is too high versus the reward. Um, especially when we have, what I think is, I realize it's, it's not as good as a turnaround, but connecting that alley, it's something, it's viable. And yes, there are issues with that, too. We have to protect the hydrant. We've talked about that with OHA did it too and, and we want to make sure that we have plans in place to safely, make that happen safely. But it's it's second best, but at least it's something. And I know just concern that the city will just backburn it, never, never fund it. I can look, look you in the eye and say, oh, we will absolutely do looking for grants. This, the connectivity stuff is something we wanted to do for years because there's a lot of alleys throughout the city that have been kind of closed off because people don't use them and then neighbors take over and it would make things a lot smoother for traffic. And I'm just swearing to you that we will absolutely be trying to get funding to get the alley open, which I know is not your first choice, but it's something, so I, I, that's, that's what I have to say.
Thanks. Do you want to hear a motion? Have to be an emotional available.
Are we going to, do we?
Absolutely. No, no, they've already.
Um, I move to the rest of the city staff.
Your second. Second. Motion made by Council Tarman, seconded by me. All right, uh, what I'd like to do now is offer, uh, three minutes to this Brewer and I agree with both of you. Okay, so who wants to go first? Do you want to come up?
I wanted to bring up the, the term Russian roulette and clarify that Russian roulette is not dangerous if there's no bullet in the gun, correct? I have a letter from Zach Golding, from the Regional Director of the Oache, from Mr. Hodges, stating that there is no what, city's domestic water distribution system is not hooked up to that pipe. It is not. And we're being told that it is beating construction standards. It's not. And I'm sure that after you read that, all the details that I've given you, you saw the words live written a lot. That's how I feel that we've been treated. I feel like our intelligence has been all of ours, City Council and citizens. We have been lied to by Public Works. They have maintained that this is hooked up, charged catastrophic events, millions of dollars, flooding the whole nine yards, and yet it doesn't meet construction standards. There's a print letter from the Location Service, it's only sent to twenty-two inches, and there's no water to it. It says right here in the email from the Regional Director, there is no water attached. There is no reason that that's a risk. And it's outside of the hundred foot basement. Yeah, if you also notice from, you know, there's not enough rooms that I never had turnaround in that right away. That fire hydrant is not allowed and it's one leak that is needed for the turning of things. You cannot turn a vehicle. You just can't. So, all this talk about vegetation buffers and cash drop events and millions of dollars and flooding and breakages and all these things, all your tactics being used to try and discourage City Council from allowing something that's been deterred since day one due to the data and testosterone, which is, is what it is. It's, we've been telling this from day one. I've submitted the evidence both from the Regional Engineer and the Location Service. Both are maintaining that number one, assessing eight construction standards, and number two, water's not leaked out. Because if it is, you're in big trouble. Because it is absolutely not supposed to have elevated levels of contaminated solvents in the water. It's not safe for, to be drinking water. It is, in fact, uh, there's more questions that need to be answered. So, I am asking the city to vote yes to over the east side of the vegetative buffer to allow for a turnaround of some sort, whether it's a hammer header of a shape. I'm asking that we do protect the well fields hundred foot basement as per OHA requirements. I'm asking that the valve can be repaired or upgraded in whichever manner the OHA deems necessary to make it safe for travel. And I'm asking last but not least, that all the employees that have been caught in the act of misleading City of Overreach Government, as well as its citizens, be held accountable and face the consequences for the actions, thus setting a precedent for both current and future employees to be forthright and true when the information provided to the people which they are employing disobeys.
So, Brewer? I'm going to hold my tongue. Thank you. Um, discussion will start with Council Zarsen, anything?
Not at this time.
Council Tarman? Um, well, I mean, I see this is, you know, there, there is still construction happening. At least to me, it's two separate issues. Around and then construction for pipe. Here exists the right way, the, whoever did the original city planning, the city came up with, it meets fire code, hundred fifty feet from dead end. It's, uh, you know, fire rate is complete, vehicles can move. If it wasn't hard, you'd have to have all the engineers got to move the pipe, redo the pipe. And from what I understand, you have very permeable soil in this area. And what I was told was you should actually think about increasing the hundred foot. That's the minimum. It's, we should actually.
Council Hollitt?
Uh, I would like to know that we allow the brewers to have discussion with us. Time frame on that. The reason for that is because this is the brewers' one and only time to talk with all seven of us. With all due respect to Mr. Clevenger and Mr. Sillström, they have time to speak with us, and I don't feel it's appropriate to give them free time. I have multiple questions on here I would like to ask them, and also I acknowledge this.
I'll second that.
Well, there's a motion on the table. What do you want to do?
What?
Is the motion already on the table?
I mean, the first.
The first motion.
Oh.
I think you would have to vote on the first motion first before you withdraw or withdraw. That means they can't talk about it.
Um, isn't, isn't there um, other times when we've had motions within motions and we?
I'm just trying to follow. I don't know if there has been a previous time. What? Could I, could I make a point of order? Um, they still have another three minutes, Mr. Brewer.
I don't want the three minute time to do this.
Okay.
This is a conversation that survives between seven people. Saying a timeline that I think is really unfair because our staff doesn't have a timeline here to take care of citizens.
Time's meeting. Hasn't this been going on for like a year?
No.
Yes.
It came to us this summer.
It came to us this.
Yeah, it's been an issue with the city for a year, council.
But there is a chance to save all seven of us. I know. If your opinions, no, that's fine. I'm saying we have questions. We need dialogue and more questions.
Mayor.
Okay.
Sorry. Uh, I wanted to know if you know, or if James knows, what the proper process is in order to address this motion and come back to the first motion.
You have to address the first motion first, or amend it. You have to deal with the amendment, or if the bonnet, put it down, take another motion. You're looking to suspend the rules and procedure. Which I think is what she's trying to do. We had another meeting where they had an argument, had this conversation. But anyway.
What? There's no.
I said, it wasn't an hour and I stopped.
No.
Anyways, sorry, it was seven minutes.
Things have happened since then.
So, so are you saying that if the whoever made the first motion were to uh, withdraw their motion, because you don't even need a second for that? Then we could address this second motion and then go back and someone could make the.
You have to suspend the rules because I believe to withdraw a motion, you can't talk about it till the next meeting.
So question, are you trying to suspend the rules about the thing? Is that, is that what you're trying to do here?
That's fine. I just would like to allow them to discuss. I don't care how it happens, but.
So you need to make a motion to suspend the rules concerning public comment outside of public comment being limited to three minutes.
I'd like to suspend the rules to public comment be limited to three minutes.
You have a time in mind, only limited to two hours. And like I said, you have a timeframe.
I just want to allow them to be people with us and us all to discuss adults a topic. I'm not going to put it for two hours or three minutes. I just would like them to be able to talk with us.
Okay, you have a second.
What second do you?
Okay.
Was the other motion, the drawner, to suspend the rules?
This is a point of order essentially.
Okay.
Suspend the rules. We have to raise them.
I don't know if you could do it in the middle of a motion though.
Well, hold on, I have a point of order that might be helpful. Um, so under chapter four of our rules for general conduct of hearing, letter D, upon being recognized by the presiding officer, that's the mayor, any member of the council, that's Councilor Hallid, the city minister, planning director, blah, 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 may question any person who testifies. And this is, yes, sure, this is under land use here. So this kind of this land use here, just thought it might be helpful because she could directly ask questions. Kind of a land use, talking about land and uses of it. Just trying to be helpful.
Second.
All right, you found the caveat and Councilor Hallid, ask your questions. Stay on point, please.
Uh, so my first question is for Mr. Hodges. Is the type of material made for the pipe in O I P different than the type of material made on Hill Street? Because my understanding was the piping in the O I P was from that at the time for the tunnels and the ones on Hill Street. Mr. Clevenger explained what's involved in the maintenance.
So.
Ed, if you, could you hear that? Okay.
You know, I heard little bits of it and I may have to ask you more questions. Uh, counselor, the pipe at the O I P and um, Robert can back me up on this, is what's known as C nine hundred PVC. And it's, it's a very strong, very durable water main and it's utilized in most public water systems, if not all. The piping types over at the Hill Street intersection where that T is, I, I believe are a mixture. And and Robert, you're gonna have to help me there. I know you've got the old steel pipe that comes out of the street from, you know, Pope and Talbot. And then you guys put in PVC pipe, right, to where we connected with the system, the C nine hundred?
That's correct. It's uh, it's ductile iron that comes out of the well field.
Yeah.
We teed into that with C nine hundred PVC. Uh, the ductile iron crosses Hill Street and then heads up the alleyway. Uh, PVC heads uh, down through where this uh, turnaround is that they're requesting uh, to the river where we crossed underneath the river.
So from what I understand, you drive PVC pipes of the O I P, O I P and higher on Hill Street.
The.
Go ahead, Robert.
The pipe that broke at O I P was C nine hundred that was installed in about two thousand and seven. The pipe that crosses Hill Street that the city teed off of to go across the river, the one that crosses Hills is ten inch ductile iron. Where we put the T in, that is changed over to C nine hundred.
Um, so I believe the pipe that you were talking about that is no longer being used, is that the pipe that goes to the Rockford or is that the pipe that was standing in the street?
The pipe that is in question is the T from the C nine hundred PVC that they put in underneath the creek. To the old ductile iron pipe that crosses Hill Street.
Do you have a connection to that one or?
Well, according to Ed Hodges and Robert Christen, they, that pipe is connected at the valve, but when Ed Hodges was asked about it from Zach with the Oregon Health Boardy, he was told that pipe was not connected and is not charged. So there's no reason that we can't drive over it if that pipe is not hooked up and not charged. And if, if it is a problem, where the valve can sits, the valve sits at twenty-two inches below it. The street is thirteen inches above that. So if we add ten inches of gravel, that would bring that valve can back up to a level playing field of thirty-two inches, which is a drivable surface for any waterline in any state. And that's a pretty easy fix. We have offered to pay for the gravel. We've offered to pay for the, the, the construction of that whole thing. Within reason. I mean, I'm not gonna have the city of overage employees, public works, rather than do that job and charge me twenty-eight thousand dollars, but I can buy gravel for nine dollars a yard. And I didn't have it dropped in for free.
Do you have anything else to mark state?
Yeah, there is also on the other side of Hill Street from that valve can, there's the fire hydrant that sits right at the supposed alleyway. Or the right way. That valve that we drive over every day is buried at six inches. Six inches deep, ductile iron or C nine hundred PVC, it doesn't matter. It's not to depth. It's not to code. So if you move the fire hydrant, in my professional opinion, move the fire hydrant to the other side of the street, you're still, you still have a hazard of driving over a pipe that's not buried to death.
Do you want to say every day, all the traffic of the street drive over?
Any questions? Let me break today. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, go ahead, please.
Um, I want to know from James if you know the answer. Uh, the, the claim or the email from Zach Golding, Zach, the regional engineer, says that there's no water.
Yeah, I would actually, I would like Ed and or Robert to address that. It was addressed in that meeting. So the question, Ed, to you is, you know, the brewers are saying that Zach with O H A has told them that the pipe in question, if the, if the proposed turnaround is not hooked up to our water system, or if it is hooked up to well number seven, where the contaminants were found, that that would be equally problematic. Is, did I summarize that? That issue correctly, that you, that you're worried that one, it's not actually hooked up to the water system. Or two, if it is hooked up, it's hooked up to well number seven, which has contaminants, and we could all be drinking that.
We have. I think both are pretty serious things.
Okay, so I, I would, as a citizen, not a city administrator, I would definitely like Ed or Robert to explain whether or not well seven is contaminated, whether or not it's hooked up to the pipes in question, and whether or not.
Sorry, but that's not my question. I want to know if there's water. I don't care where it's coming from, hooked up to the can that she's referring to because
Yeah.
Her people told her or the county, whoever.
Yeah, sorry, I meant.
There is no water flowing there, so.
Yeah, sorry, I, 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 I brought your question, but that is part of my question. Is it hooked up?
Yeah, no, I, I'm just listening. Um, let me see if I can summarize. I'll get, I'll jump to the easy one. Well, they're, they're both pretty easy. Well, number seven, for those who don't know, is drilled, it's about five hundred feet, maybe a little bit further downstream from the location of the, the city's well field now. So it, it's southwest. Uh, it was drilled in twenty eighteen, I believe. Twenty seventeen into twenty eighteen. And unfortunately and sadly, uh, when it was tested after being developed, it was, it was found that there was a chemical in it called petrachlorothene. Uh, which is a chlorinated solvent, and it was above the concentration that's considered safe uh, to drink this water. So after some consideration of alternatives at that time, um, the well was left as is. It was, it was sealed in the top, so no one could get access to it. And no further construction took place in there, including no pump was put in it, no water mains are attached to it. It's, it's completely isolated from your existing water system. There's no way that it can get water out of it into your water system. It just can't happen. So that's, that's number one. Number two is going back up to the T, you know, that again, what I described earlier when starting, that there is a ten inch pipe that comes out of the well field. The wells are all kind of manifold together. They're attached to the single pipe that's coming out of the well field. It goes out to the T. And it can, the water there goes either two ways. It goes down through the C nine hundred pipe to the new boring underneath the river. Or it continues out along the road back into the old distribution system. I'm, I'm not aware, I don't really even understand this reference to a pipe that's empty. I'm not, and I'm not trying to denigrate anyone or anything like that. I'm, I'm somewhat perplexed by the description. That is what's going on, as far as I know, with the distribution.
Okay.
Um, can I rephrase a question and just have a yes or no answer? Is there water running underneath the can in question right now?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh.
Go ahead.
I would, I would like to know why there is water, contaminated water, running through that valve can that's connected to our city drinking water.
There, there's no contaminated water. The contaminated water is a well that's been taxed, closed off, that's never any.
That's where that valve is connected to.
No, it's not.
Ed just said that valve.
It's back in my house. I noticed that.
It goes from under the creek, up that dry creek bed to that, to the well field and connects at the valve.
Okay, so we have a city engineer that's been in the city for thirty years and, and he knows the system as does Robert. I kind of have to trust staff. I know you think you know what.
I'm sure I work here though.
Sorry, that's exactly why we're here. But it could be a misunderstanding and if we can, I, I'm just hypothetically, if, if we're confusing wells, maybe this will clear it up.
This new C nine hundred PVC that was put in underneath the creek comes from the new well that was put in, the water tower on top of Dunning Road, correct?
No.
Oh, it doesn't?
No. Yeah, I, there's the what, there's first of all, the, the pipe underneath the river that we installed in twenty seventeen is, is H, that in itself in the bore is H P E. It transitions just to get under the river. That goes up to a pump station. It comes, it's water that gets water from the city well field. Existing city well field, wells, wells one through six. They pump it up to a pump station that sits um, right across from Tanori in the, in the industrial part. That pump station then pumps it up to the new reservoir that's on TV booth, TV view.
Okay. Any other questions? That's all. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Resherzyn, go ahead.
Yeah, regarding the current just uh, topic, from my understanding, it's not the contaminated well that's running in through that valve, like Robert said, it's from the well field. That's that whole well field area, that hundred foot that we're protecting, correct? It's not the water from the contaminated well that we're talking about. It's the running water from the well field, existing well field.
Uh, you're correct, counselor. It, it comes from wells one, two, four, and six. Those four wells supply the entire distribution system. And they all exit the well field at that location where the T is. The T then goes across the river like Ed just explained to a bump station to fill the O I P. If it heads further northeast, then it will fill the east reservoir, which is on top of uh, Levitt's property. And that's the big green one that everybody can mostly see. And then it also feeds the west reservoir, which is over on top of Second Street over the railroad tunnel that goes uh, to Westford.
Panel, Councilor Resherzyn.
Yeah, I'd like to know from the engineer and Robert and whoever else can answer, um, is putting enough gravel on top of that valve a viable option? So it's not dangerous to drive over if we consider leaving a turnaround right there? on top of that valve a viable option, so it's not dangerous to drive over if we consider leaving a turnaround right there?
I don't, as your engineer, I would say no. And again, it just goes back to the risk of something happening to that junction. And you have to think, counselor, you know, going back to the failure that we had earlier this fall over in the O I P. This C nine hundred pipe is incredibly strong, and it was buried at the proper depth, it was put in perfectly correctly. And it still failed. You know, there's something, a, a probability came along, and again, I think it was the heavy loading from the fire. You know, the fault that did it. And therefore, by just putting essentially gravel on top, on such a sensitive place. It's, it's my opinion, and, and this is what you pay me for, I'm just here to give you my opinion, and no, that's not adequate. The, the best thing is just not to have any driving there at all, eliminates the risk.
And I'd like to add to what he just explained, the, the pipe that heads up industrial Parkway that, that cracked and broke uh, is actually buried at a level of forty eight inches deep.
Right.
Not just the standard thirty inches, so, uh, it's, it was forty eight inches deep to the top of the pipe where it broke.
Thank you, guys, and one more question to follow that up for now, um, is that one that cracked in the O I P and was replaced or repaired, is that one still being driven over regularly?
Yes, it is, however, that portion of pipe that, uh, was in that location, we switched it out from C nine hundred to a piece of ductile iron due to the location and, um, what, what was going on in that exact vicinity. So we beefed it up with a stick of ductile iron, so it will not ever break there again.
That's from anything else?
Um, as I understand it, like we're trying to find locations for wells, like we already have short supply of city water. Um, I just don't understand why we want to go near there. I mean, it seems like we're putting our water risk.
Councilor Hall.
Yeah, we said in regards to the other side of this, the Salmon Creek side, we talked about whatever happened with the brewers' side, the same thing would happen over there. But my understanding that that's not the case, that's not being closed off, so no driving over that side as well?
Oh, yeah, we have, that's the eminent domain stuff that we talked about, you're talking about the well near Brian's house, West seven.
Yes, is, is it, it goes on Salmon Creek?
Yeah, letters are about ready to go out to those residents telling them.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that the same principles for the pipes in front of the brewers is the same exact principles that are happening on Salmon Creek?
Sort of, that, that just goes back to the hundred foot buffer.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
So anything within that hundred foot?
Correct, and there's.
Is it the, the exact same thing?
Yes, now, now that we know about this issue, we looked at all the wells, drew hundred foot circles on, on, around all of them, found out that there are two properties in that alley that are problematic and will not.
So that alley is gonna be closed off or?
Yeah, for public, it's, it'll still be accessible, it'll be gated.
So will there still be vehicles driving over it?
There, there's no pipes there.
I thought it was in the, that road, it doesn't go through that road?
No.
It's still in the hundred foot easement building.
Yeah, that's just, that's just, that goes back to the hundred foot easement issue. Yeah, not, but not a pipe issue.
Um, and like I thought we talked about this before, if we went with the alley option, um, I don't remember us talking about grant funding, I'm not opposed to that idea, but is ARPA funds an option? Or if we were to move to the alley option?
I, I would have to get back to him, I have to read the ARPA rules, thanks.
I'm not sure. Councilor Kennedy, or something?
I have several things, is that okay?
Yeah, we'll run over it eventually, everyone gets a chance.
Okay. Um. Okay, so now, um. I wanted to find out what happened after, uh, we, all the council got an email from Rick to ask us several questions pertaining to this matter. And what happened with that compile information?
I, only Rick can answer that, is it, were they not addressed in, in the twenty, twenty-five, some pages that, that you put out?
I didn't see anything, now, uh, the twenty-five pages you're referring to, is that all the?
Is it general and the appendix?
Yeah. Uh, no, I didn't, I didn't see any, you know, like.
We need to wait till Rick gets back.
Possibly, but i- if she has a specific question, we may be able to answer.
Well, I, I wanted to know what the actual, uh, recommendation is from.
Our recommendation is, is to do the alley, do part of connectivity for the entire city, because there are lots of alleys that could be improved. That's the recommendation from city staff, is to leave the well field area alone, do not put a turnaround anywhere near the well field. We go the other way and build the alley. So you can drive through the alley, which we realize will take, we may have to move that fire hydrant, may have to move powerful, et cetera. But in my mind, city staff's mind, those risks are a lot lower than messing around where it's catastrophic. Like I said, normally don't like to be worried more like that, but after listening, not only to Ed Hodges, but O H A today too, I mean, there's concern.
So the original, or, uh, a couple meetings ago when this was discussed, we got some information from the city staff. It said to do the work in the alley would cost ten thousand dollars or something like that, it was barely minimal in comparison to the amount that was suggested it would cost.
But now, so now, um, uh, O H A received a, a consumer complaint of so now they are, uh, looking at us a little more, more carefully, and anything we do, um, may need to involve O H A. So there may be some additional costs and planning, no matter what we do, it doesn't matter. It's become a bigger issue, they, O H A wants to make sure everything is safe.
That's good.
Yeah, that's great, yeah, exactly, and that's why we test our water annually, and that report is available to everyone, the one from last year is up, posted online and on board, um. Anything else?
Um, I'll hold it for the next round.
That's all. Councilor Hall. Pardon? Uh. Councilor Johnson, a new hand?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
So, I understand the risks involved, um, and they can seem pretty significant. However, I believe that we should mitigate risk, I don't think we can ever completely eliminate risk, that's just life. Is there a way that while we're waiting for grant funding to do the alleyway for, you know, or alleyway costs for the entire city, which I think is great, and so is not to play favorites, can we allow something like the brewers putting the gravel there to lessen the very small risk and still allow some kind of turnaround access until we can open the alleyway?
In my opinion, there's already room to turn around a fire truck, I watched it myself. That's my opinion, it's, it's pretty wise down there, it's wider than normal street. Yeah, it's not as wide as a cul-de-sac, it's not as wide as a turnaround, but it's, there are worse areas in the city of Oak Ridge, much narrower.
If you had a chance to lessen risk, why wouldn't you do it if I'm not letting people drive over that, is my answer. Considering the, the catastrophic result if it does fail. Uh, anyone else?
When Ms. Hollitt turned that fire truck around, after the barricades were put in, there were no cars parked on the street, none. Right now, all three of my neighbors have multiple cars parked on the street. You cannot take a fire truck down there right now and turn it around, I promise you that. Without a twenty-seven point turn, you're not turning around a truck.
We use that number at least.
I can't turn, I cannot turn my truck around, I have a two thousand thirteen Duramax extra cab long bed. It's roughly twenty-two feet from bumper to bumper, I cannot turn that truck around without a three-point turn. The fire truck, how, how long is a fire truck?
I'm not sure how much that will, longer than.
They're way longer than my truck.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I didn't fully answer, uh, Councilor Bjornson's question, because, uh, today with O H A, they said that if we do go ahead with the turnaround in the park area, that we would need to submit engineering plans, basically, and have that approved.
Councilor Kennedy.
Uh, real quick, if we did the alley, would we need to submit plans for approval, same, same deal?
Yes, but to, to a lesser degree, there was some question about the fire hydrant, so yes, we would use that, but it's a lot, it's not like full-blown engineering. Is that, is that correct? That was my understanding from today's meeting.
Yes, that's what I understood, James.
Councilor Trump, curious, I mean, do you have any idea what the legal implications are of allowing uh, a turnaround in that area? I mean, would that sub presence for how many evidence rates do we have, forty something, fifty?
Legally, no, uh, but expectations, I psychologically, others would say, hey, you gotta turn around, we won't, and it might be on a place where we don't have any city property, just on the case, so we, we have to be buying private citizens property, or it could turn around in a lot of areas.
Question, real quick, how many of those streets that don't have turnarounds are in excess, five hundred feet and have a fire hydrant? Tell me that, because I'll tell you what, fire codes, the fire marshal, everyone has told me, fire hydrants and excess of five hundred feet require a turnaround, no hip ends or butts, no wiggle room, no, no.
Well, but, and I'd like to differ with you on that, that is the current code, and for any new construction, absolutely, one hundred percent that applies, but this is actually new
code, have you talked to the state fire marshal?
I've not. Didn't Chris, in, uh, the county prime marshal?
We talked to state fire marshal on a, on a separate issue, I don't think it was about.
Oh, it's.
I hope, maybe, well, it is, but I don't know.
There's an email that Rick talks about, oh, isn't this a better option? Look at these Google Earth photos with all the trees in the way, you can't see anything, but isn't this a better option? Well, of course. But in actuality, it's only eleven feet in the middle. And there's water pipes running through there, it's gonna need to be brought up, you're gonna have to remove trees, there's a whole bunch of factors, and it will need a plan review, because there's water involved.
That's okay.
Um, this question is for the brewers, um, in the email that you sent out with your notes on the timelines that were mentioned. The very bottom of that, I don't have it with me. It seems like there was some kind of a mention about, uh, like you were questioned about your business on your property, what, can you tell me what that's about?
Yeah, um, because my, our business, our construction business, it's registered on, in our home address, because our home office is there. We were accused of running a commercial construction business out of our home in a residentially zoned area, which is crazy. We don't run anything, we have a shop, and I run our home office, I run our business from our office in my home. But we have a shop that holds materials, we don't hold our, we have a van, it's not housed on the property. Like, it's just our home, and we have trailers, yes, we have a travel trailer, we have a boat, we have a dump trailer. We just, we have vehicles, and we can't redirect them safely, neither can anybody else. Schwanz came down today, and it was like, back up, back up, back up, back up. So it's, it's like this every day.
We have people turning around in our driveway, they pull right up next to the wife's car in the driveway and back up, and then take off, when I open up the door, they peel out of the driveway. On a daily basis.
Yeah, I can see that, there's a way, you can't, the street just goes right into your driveway.
Right.
Um, I have one more, but I'll wait.
James, what do you have?
In, in regards to that, so here, here's the email from Chief Chad Minter, Cobra Fire Chief, but also the chief of the conglomerate of the fire department, where Scott was here to explain.
He was the chief, but it's a confirmation team.
Gotcha, well, so we're talking about access, and how hard was it to turn around a Hill Street? So this is the fireman that was there, and he said, Scott, I have no clue about this incident, I was involved in that area, I can say I drove just about every street in that area. High Prairie, Jasper, Beach, and Hill Street, myself and our mutual aid task forces drove most of everything north of fifty-eight, and we had no access problems in the city. There are dead-end streets in Oak Ridge, just like in every other place we go. As far as access, the only really concerning thing we were faced with is the one way in and out of High Prairie.
One way. Were you talking about the state fire marshal's comments, because that's different, that's the evacuation state.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
That's correct, that's, that's what he said, confirmation team, it's not the state marshal.
Well, there was a state fire marshal's team that came up, and then there was a, like, county concentration team that came up, so they are different teams.
Yeah.
And the state marshals are, are CC'd on this email, Brent, Brent Griffins, Griffiths, sorry, and Christina DeShane.
Hey, you have another question, Councilor Kennedy?
Um, well, I didn't really, I didn't really get an answer to the, uh, question, I don't think I got an answer, but so somehow it came up that you are supposedly running your business out of your property, how, how did that come up?
What, that was, can I answer that? That was Rick, Councilor, grabbing for strings, trying to protect whatever he's trying to protect, he's just looking for something to take the focus off of the problem and turn it towards another potential issue that he thinks might be there.
We need to be careful about identifying individuals and their experience. Um, so we're at twenty hundred, so does anyone have a problem with fifteen minutes addition? Councilor Johnson, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go to twenty fifteen, P fifteen, sure.
I'm concerned, so as I understand it, after speaking with the, the organic authority and the engineer, no matter what we do, you know,
They want specs, yeah.
We require specs, and we require funding, so the funding has to come from somewhere. Right, and is it in the budget currently to do this?
No, it's not in our current budget.
That's okay.
Sorry, I, I, I'm just wondering how that's possible, because the street fund does have, have money in the street fund to be used for street repair.
But it's, I, I thought the question was, is it line item, like, is the project we have already budgeted for, no. Do we have the money? Sure, we, we, yeah, we could take, we could take money from the parks budget, since it's in the park.
Well, it's a street, and we have street funds, so why wouldn't we go straight there?
We do, we do, we do have street funds that are available for just this. However, I don't know that it's enough street funds to do it, I would have to give you a, a clear answer tomorrow when I get back to the office.
Regardless, it's gonna be a subsequent budget, we have to allot these funds for, so.
What is wrong with the general public paying for that, like, myself? I have engineers on hand that can draw up a set of plans, I have dump trailers and tractors to put down the road fill and gravel.
As long as the city, as long as our city engineer is able to review those plans, that he's okay with them, I can see that.
That's, any finding?
But it's not released, the city administrators and city general. Probably needs to get some caution, but, because I don't know the answer for that, but that's such a. Anyone else? So, Councilor Hall, yeah, Councilor Kennedy.
Yeah, uh, if, so if we found that we did have the money, and or if the brewers wanted to help pay for some or all of the work to be done to put that alley together, when is the soonest that the city could do it, and how long would it take?
Well, prior to our meeting. Well, prior to our meeting with OHA, we, we could start work almost immediately. Um, now with the OHA wanting a little more information, um, that will be delayed. But I, I, I'm sorry, I'm due, so.
Yeah, you're gonna have to draw up plans.
Yeah, but, but a lot of the plans are already, you know, we already have photographs and stuff from Rick. So it's not, I don't anticipate it being.
I guess maybe, let me rephrase, could it happen within weeks or months, or do you think it would happen ten or twelve years from now?
The alley?
Yeah.
Oh, I think that could happen. Ass- assuming OHA signs off, signs off on everything within a year, is that, yeah, Robert Chagin said yes.
That sounds good, um. That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else?
Counselor, it probably works, um, I know there's a big push to get, uh, the OIP area, um, some of the infrastructure in there, so we can sell it, etc., and are we concerned about putting other projects ahead of potential projects to bring this city in more money?
Um, so it was my understanding in a previous meeting, that if we took care of this alley, it might take a day or two. So it doesn't seem like that would be a huge inconvenience towards a project that's been put off for already over three years. Just so you know, four.
I mean, with, uh, with all the design and the potential engineering in this project, I'm, I'm just curious, I mean, I assume it's going to be more involved now. If OIP is involved, then they're going to require more. And where it was just going to be pretty great and gravel alley, now it's going to be more.
Yeah, but I don't think it'll be a whole lot more, I, and I don't know, maybe Ed or Robert got a better feel for that. To me, OHA just wanna make sure we're using the right, uh, valves, and, and then we have to make sure we see where the depths are of, of any pipes that would be affected going through the alley, we have to make sure those are kosher, um. But I don't know, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know exactly how long that would take to figure that stuff out, but it, it didn't seem like they were gonna, OHA was gonna be super picky on it, make sure we met the standards.
Counselor Bjornson?
Yeah, as I said before, I, I, I'm willing to vote yes on this motion, but I wanna make sure that it's understood that this isn't an end to this issue, because the, the funding for the alleyways through the city is important and good for the entire city, but this is an ongoing issue with one area. And I do think the focus needs to be on getting this particular area taken care of as soon as possible. Like, I think Counselor Kenyon's point is not ten years down the road, because once we make this motion and vote on it, then it's closed and nobody's gonna care anymore. I think it's important that even though there's other projects that could make money in the OIP, these are citizens that are, have a concern that had been brought to us over and over again, and that we've gone over, over and over again, and it's important.
Okay, thank you. What else? Okay, uh, so the motion was to move to direct city staff to research grant funding opportunities for improved connectivity of alleys throughout Oak Ridge. Jackie, you have a call for a vote, please.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Holliday?
Aye.
Counselor Charman?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, um. Given time, I think that what I'd like to do is, um, zoom to the items that have guests here, so like to move to nine point eight, which is.
I'm just thinking, because those are all kind of connected, we have some discussion, I just don't want to be heated quickly, but I would love to see appointments for budget committee, probably say, even by the way, since those are guests as well.
Okay, I'll ask, I'll buy that, I'll buy that. Uh, fifteen point one, uh, which is budget committee appointment.
So that means we probably won't get to.
Next time. Fifteen point one, there is, uh, Linda Camerar's application for the budget. And she is on the Zoom, uh, probably in Puerto Rico still, in any case, uh, any questions of Linda Camerar? All right. Linda, any comments before we vote on it?
No, please proceed.
Okay. Here's your motion?
Yeah.
I move, we appoint Linda Camerar to seat three of the budget committee for a term expiring in December twenty twenty-five.
Jackie? Motion made by Counselor Charman, seconded by Counselor Holliday. Jackie, you call for a vote, please.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Charman?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, fifteen point two, Marty Scott, which is. For Public Safety Committee, can I hear a motion?
I move, we appoint Marty Scott to seat six of the Public Safety Committee for a term expiring in December twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Hooker, seconded by Counselor Holliday, any discussion or questions of, all right. Jackie?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Charman?
Ayes.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Holliday?
Aye.
Motion passes, welcome forward. Thank you for being so long. James, how do you propose doing the library board? Would you like to, let's try it?
I think if, if, if everyone's here, maybe we should go for it, uh, yeah, there, there are four applicants, the library board is recommended, um, Robert Woodson. But if they're all here, it's been really hard to get everybody here, I got responses from all four candidates, they would be here today.
Um, maybe we should ask, because I think there's people on other pages here.
Robert Woodson, are you online?
Yes, I am, I, I missed a question, go ahead.
Woodson, Robert, okay, we're looking for Robert Woodson. I don't hear him.
I'm, I'm finally tabling.
Okay. So we have enough time for public.
I'm really sorry, that, that seems unfair. They all said they would be here, we haven't checked if anyone else is here.
Lori's here.
Can we continue on with this item?
Pollute, counsel.
Counsel, do you think we just shut it off, or? Question, okay, there are seven positions.
No, there used to be seven positions.
I was gonna suggest.
Yeah, but no.
Not as much desire, which is not common for our committees, right?
Does that sound a resolution?
That's my point, I'm sorry, there are seven seats, just six of our offices. Oh, and one of them, one of those six is vacant.
You wanna proceed on, uh, consensus of council, that they want to proceed? Yeah, yeah. Proceed with the library board selections, yes. All right, go ahead, your motion then.
Well, we haven't even finished asking who else is here, we have, we know for sure one. Do we have Dill, whoever Dill is, or Samuelson?
That's me, and I'm here.
Thank you. Is Samuelson here? Is that Lisa?
She was.
She was.
Okay. So. I don't have a motion.
There are half the candidates here, is my concern, because the meeting went so long, they probably maybe in some sense, we weren't gonna get to this. Vote even only half the candidates here. Robert, let's see who wants to, he's not here. He's somebody else that's gonna miss it.
Was he ever here? Robert's here, man. Robert Woodson's here. Where?
He didn't speak at all.
Yeah, he, no, that, that was.
Yes.
Robert Woodson never owns a library or slots a.
No, that, and that, that was the problem last time, where
Also, we don't, you know.
council didn't go with library board's recommendation, because it didn't show up to that meeting.
Yeah.
Why, you should run a council for that one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, you know, they miss, you miss. This will be.
I normally agree with you guys, but I feel like since this, this, the meeting, I personally would be okay with it.
Your motion?
I move. I move for a question. Do I hear some of the candidates first?
Make a motion, we can only change the motions.
Can you, uh, clarify which candidates are present, please?
Lori, Patty, and.
Yeah, Ben Dill.
Ben Dill, I'm sorry, I was just looking what was on the name of the screen.
I'll make a motion to nominate Ben Dill for the vacant seat on the library board.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by Counselor Kenyon, and seconded by Counselor Bjornson. Discussion or questions of candidates? Counselor Holliday?
That's a very good question. Uh, well, I'm a volunteer at the library for two years. Uh, I'm just too impressed with the, you know, the building and the, and the people that come to the library, and its growth, and so I decided to put in the board, which is the time I put in, so there weren't any other people applying. So, I like. Well, it was the end of last year. So, and it didn't get considered the first time, because someone lost the application. So, that's what I was told, so I have to do it again, so, but I'm just interested. Thank you, thank you.
Questions?
Um, I would ask the same question of, uh.
I'm sorry, I didn't get to hear that question.
Yeah, um, what is your interest in serving on the library board?
Oh, perfect, um, I'm fairly new in town, we moved here last year, um, my husband and I and our kid, and I'm getting my master's in library science. Um, so I'm very highly invested in libraries, um, I think they're great for communities, they're very important, um, they're places for education and art, social gatherings, um, clubs, community. And, um, I wanna serve my community, I grew up in a small community, um, and would just love to give back and be on the council and see if we can bump up the library a bit.
Thank you.
Counselor Charman? Counselor Bjornson, questions?
No questions.
Anyone, if you amend or change anything before we go to a vote? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Charman?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Thank you.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, uh, council, are you up for another fifteen minutes for some time-sensitive issues?
Lori, thank you for your application, and I apologize if that was lost, and we make sure that, that as soon as there is a resignation or the city is expired, the Lori is actually contacted for that position. Thank you for your answer.
In fact, I will be emailing all the candidates to let them know we will keep their applications for a year or something. And, and council could also think about expanding the other issue, but.
Also, I'd like.
You're welcome, thank you. Thank you for your time, you've already given. Oh, I'm not.
Right, I'd also like to point out that we have several committees, if you're interested to have vacancies, really, there's a lot, RTMP in particular, and admin that can't even meet because of a lack of form. Thank you.
All right, thank you, um, moving on to nine point seven, is that?
Yeah, nine point seven is the softball field renovations, which the Dorland School District is, is offering, uh, to uh, prepare the roof on the dugout and improve the backstop, so the money for the halls, school district's gonna pay for all of it, it's about ten thousand dollars for the work. Technically, just need our permission, because it is our property, but no strings attached, I knew the work, they're gonna pay for it, city will benefit in the end. But they need to do this, you know, before softball season, so. Any time sensitive.
Your emotions?
I'm. I move to approve allowing the Oak Ridge School District to reroute the Horton Park softball field dugouts and improve the backstop.
Thank you, second. By Counselor Hooker, or seconded by Counselor Charman, any other discussion or questions? Jackie?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Holliday? Counselor Charman?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on to ten point three. That is WAC electrical repairs, James?
So I'm simply asking for, uh, council's permission to immediately solicit bids from electricians, I'll get at least three, um, to replace that problematic panel in the WAC. That we refer to, two major steps to getting it reinsured, um, and also as soon as we start doing this, it'll be under construction, get a higher insurance policy on it than what we currently have, which wouldn't really cover, you know, uh. So, yeah, just need permission to, to.
Your motion?
I've moved to allow the city to immediately solicit bids for replacing the electrical panel inside the WAC and using the informal bid solicitation process.
Okay.
Made by Counselor Charman, seconded by Counselor Hooker, any discussion on this, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, I read through this, but that was a whole day ago, so, forget, um, this type of selection or bid process, does it include us reaching out to some companies and asking them if they're interested in bidding?
Yeah, like, because it's under a hundred fifty K.
Right.
We can do the informal process, um. Uh, but, so I could get, or at least try to get at least three bids, because I, I, the estimate is roughly ten thousand.
Right.
So because of that, we're just gonna be safe. Or attempt to get three plus bids, I'm sure we will get plus bids.
I was just wondering if it's okay for me to throw out a name, because they do a lot of work in our area, and they're local people that live here, is the GMD Electric.
Already on my list.
Thank you.
Possible.
Other discussions? One, education remains, it's already budgeted for, it's under ten thousand, small, western progress.
Well, see, I was worried it was gonna go above ten.
So even that, I think you got up to that fifty, that's canceled.
I, I know, I know difference of opinion between you and I, I know I don't have to, but I, I just, I'd like to take the range, take the range, take the range, all right, well, I just kinda like, I, I see your point, you are correct.
All right, any other? Jackie?
Counselor Holliday? Counselor Charman?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, we still have time for, what was the comment, anyone in the room, hold on, I have a comment. On the Zoom, any comments? Where, how's it going? Your motion good, or?
Second.
There that, uh, 8.2, thanks everybody for the one minute turnaround.